Recording.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Sholdas.
Here.
O'Brien. Butterfield.
Here.
Osmus. Vagerly. So we have six present, three absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No proclamation consent items? Well, proposed additions or deletions to the agenda. First of all, I'm going to move Richard up to in the under regular business. Q will be before J. Change the alphabet. Okay? Any other proposed additions or deletions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries. Consent items. Judy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the accounts payable report, city council minutes of January 23rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of January 23rd, a premise permit for Wilmer Baseball Booster Association at Grizzlies Wood Fired Grill and Bar, a resolution for the equitable cost sharing for publicly owned nursing facilities, a resolution for Public Works bucket truck purchase, a resolution for Public Works one ton pickup purchase, the CVB Board minutes of December 20th, 2022, and for council's information, the planning commission applicant approval of Ivan Phil's aim.
All right. Approve the consent agenda items. If any of you want, Ivan is here. At any time you want to talk to him. I don't know if you're going to be sticking around until the end of the meeting, but he's here tonight. All right?
I'll move to approve the consent items.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second discussion? Yes, Audrey.
Just a point of clarification. Is the Wilmer Baseball Booster Association, is that pull tabs at Grizzlies?
Um, that is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Be five ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. Open forum, Judy, do we have anybody?
No, we have no one signed up for tonight.
Public hearing, ordinance amending Wilmer Municipal Code, Chapter 3, alcoholic beverages. Robert.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is an ordinance this came to light, and it's a response and follow-up to an ordinance the city council adopted last year to update its liquor licensing regulations following changes made to the state law that applies to cities that generally broaden the types and circumstances under which the city could issue licenses. The, one of the specific amendments the city made in response to that state law was to allow the local town ball association to obtain a liquor license for games played at the city-owned Swanson Field complex or any city-owned complex. In implementing the new ordinance, it came to light that there's a circumstance that is likely to occur somewhat frequently where the town ball game would be taking place at the same time in a complex of four diamonds where youth baseball would also be occurring. We had a discussion at staff level about whether it was practical, whether there are any procedures that could be implemented to kind of keep the town ball diamond separate and still allow alcohol to be sold. And I believe the conclusion of that discussion was that it really wasn't practical at this facility. So the direction from staff was to amend the ordinance so that it was clear that alcohol could not be sold at a complex at the same time a youth event was taking place at the same time. That's what this ordinance amendment does. It would not it would not prevent the town ball team from obtaining a license and serving alcohol when there are not youth events happening at the same time at the same complex. But when there are, they would not be allowed to do so. So with that, the recommendation would be that the city council conduct a public hearing, adopt the ordinance, and sign it a number, and publish it.
Okay, thank you. Council members?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Counsel, second.
We got a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, didn't catch who did the second? Butterfield?
Thank you.
And Mayor and council, I would point out just before there would be any vote that as it is an ordinance, it would require five votes from the council. So in light of the attendance tonight, it would need to be unanimous.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Roll call.
Okay, we should close the hearing first.
Okay, I guess I can do that. Close the hearing. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Hi.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. All right, regular business. Again, I said we were going to move Q, the introduction of ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer. Richard Dengan is here to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The Charter Commission recommends that the city amend the planning commission part of the Charter Commission. It has stated that the planning commission would prepare the five-year capital budget and present it to the council. Historically, that hasn't happened that way, and for good reasons. The planning commission is not in the best position to do this. I think with the mayor and the staff and the council is the appropriate way for that. So this amendment changes it that the planning commission will review and being able to make comments, recommendations, and pass it on. But they would not prepare it from scratch.
Okay. So is this a what's the action, appropriate action?
Mayor, council, the recommendation for tonight would be to introduce the ordinance and set the matter for a public hearing on March 6th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Sorry to
Thanks for moving it up.
Make it so quick, but
That's fine.
Yeah, we appreciate it. All right, Sunrise Park Parking Lot Conception. Jared.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In your packets this evening is some information related to the Sunrise Park Parking Lot concepts that are I don't recall specifically if it was the last meeting in December or one of the first in January. Council did have some questions relative to some previous concept plans that were prepared for that parking lot. Staff did look into that. We've summarized three options associated with that parking lot for council consideration. I'll just run through them briefly, and they can best be seen on the on the figure that was prepared for this. Option one, which is pink in the figure, that is actually the option that was originally included in the feasibility report. So option one essentially is no change. Option two expands that existing parking area to the west towards 23rd Street. And what that does ultimately is it allows for a couple additional parking spots in that area. And then option three is the larger orange area identified in the figure, which would expand that parking lot to the south. It would ultimately connect to the existing parking lot if that were to remain via a trail. There were some costs identified in the in the memo included in your in your packets this evening. Again, option one is as contemplated in the feasibility report. Option two, total project costs there would be $85,000, and that would include the pink and the blue areas. And then the orange area constructing the new parking lot, that would be $190,000. So I know a council requested that information. It's being provided for discussion and feedback. And again, currently, as the projects are being designed, they're proceeding with option number one until council indicates otherwise.
All right. Any questions? Audrey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Reese. When I was looking at this from a safety standpoint of your microphone. Is that better? Okay. All right. From a safety standpoint, that's been some of the concerns with how the trail, you know, the trail comes down into the parking lot, and then there isn't really a way to get across the street. And I know there's also been future requests for sidewalks somewhere with that. And so I was trying to think about it from the drawing that you did. What would be the best option? And if we did go to option three, what would happen to the current parking lot right now? Would it just be gravel? I mean, would it be a place that you could like have a bike spot or in relationship to where the field is? You know, I know there were concerns about, you know, the cars sitting in option three that getting hit, you know, with that. And so I'm just curious. I feel like there's some good things and then some things that are we making it better or worse kind of thing. So back to the the trail coming into the parking lot. There really isn't another place to go with that. And any thoughts on?
Yeah, so I guess what I would offer is I know that council has discussed or requested that staff look into a sidewalk along 23rd. That hasn't been done yet, but it will be. That's a separate project from any of the mill and overlay improvements that are being considered right now. But in terms of the trail, that is also one of the projects in dire need because that trail is definitely in in poor condition. Nonetheless, I think ultimately, and just brainstorming briefly with staff, again, we haven't looked at this in real depth, but a trail connection out to the trail on Wilmer Avenue would be appropriate long term for that. The second question, as it relates to if option three was selected, what would happen to the existing parking lot? That could be converted to grass, a portion of it could remain. Ultimately, the the options there are wide open if that were the option that was selected. So wouldn't necessarily have to stay if that was your question.
May I ask one more?
Yes, Audrey.
How badly does this need to be done this year if we're not really sure what we want? What if we waited till next year?
My opinion would be that the parking lot could potentially wait, if council wants to, until next year. However, that trail is in really bad shape. Something needs to be done with that very soon.
Are they being looked at as two separate projects or two separate funding kind of options too?
Current, well, currently, both the parking lots and the trails are not an assessed improvement. So the parking lots have been included with the trail at this point. Certainly, if there's if council wants to, we can just separate out the trail piece of that project and move that forward. I guess the question would be that Block 22 parking lot, that's also in pretty bad shape. So we could move that one plus the trail forward. Leave out the Sunrise Parking Lot trail at this point, or any combination that council sees fit.
On option three, is there a way we could probably push this a little bit further south? And then to the east, get a little bit more in outfield versus because where it is, cars are still going to get hit by the foul balls there.
Yeah, so we could potentially look at that. Based on our initial review of that, when we put these concepts together, the further south we go, the more great issues we run into. And there's a lot more dirt work that would be required with that. And we'd want to be cognizant of ADA requirements too. So I mean, that's certainly something that could be looked at, but I do know that there's a larger effort there in terms of time and ultimately cost from the contractor's perspective.
And then getting back to that, I know myself and a couple other council members been called up by the homeowners on that road with parking on the streets, where that street is constructed and the speed of that street is a big concern, even without a ballgame going on down there. This definitely needs to be done. And I talked with the baseball association a little bit tonight. They're all for it. They want, they would like, one of them would like to see where the parking lot is now turned into green. We could have some picnic tables there. And another one said, right now, it's it's dangerous. Something needs to be done. It can't remain as is. You know, so it's a little bit more money, but for safety wise and everything else like that, I think the city has to move forward with option three and kind of move that down a little bit more to protect some of the vehicles, cars up in the front. And, you know, if we could just push it up towards the outfield now, basically, if the little kids are using that, they're not going to be hitting that many home runs out of there.
Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Butterfield. As someone that, you know, lives pretty close to this area and drives past it quite a bit, like anytime that there's a game, like it's a it's a one-lane street. And if you're lucky, sometimes it's even narrower than that, I feel like. I would definitely be in favor of adding, you know, the spots that option three is providing. What would be the options of moving it further north, where you're actually like almost starting where the existing parking lot is and expanding it? I'm not a foul ball expert, and I'm also kind of wondering about trees too. Like, do trees provide any any shield from that? It sounds like you'd suggest, Councilmember Butterfield, that further into the outfield is better. Okay.
It can get hit a lot more balls going over the backstop, and I don't think there's room back over there.
Okay.
Houses right behind there too.
Sure. What, do trees provide shield if it stays where it is? Because I also, you know, knowing that area, like it's going to be tough to build a parking lot a whole lot further south.
You can, could look at that too.
And then I guess my last point would just be like, I mean, currently, right now, if we're with the cars parked on the street the way they are, they're going to be hit by foul balls as well. And they have been, right? Like, I'm not sure that we're providing a whole lot of protection of increased protection, but just getting those cars off the street into a parking lot seems to be a win. It may not be perfect, but option three seems far more preferable than one or two.
Carl.
What's to stop people from parking in the street anyway? I mean, from looking at that option three, it's going to be a little bit of a walk to get to the seating. People are going to park in the street so they don't have to walk so far. Seems to me that won't really stop anything in that regard. It might save cars from being hit by balls, but people are still going to park in the street.
I got a question. I don't know if anybody can help me. I don't know how many games a week we have out there.
According, I can't tell you how many games, but this is a primary, one of the primary fields for youth baseball and softball. So it's one of the very, it's a very active field.
Okay, so it's not going to be one of the fields that with the new facilities out by the civic center that it will be any less?
Correct. It won't be, it won't be used any less than it has in the past.
Okay, Tom.
Getting back to his comment, couldn't we put no parking on that side of the street? Put some signs up, get an ordinance going on that, no parking. You know, that would force them into parking in the parking lot there. It's going to free up that street. And I'm sure the homeowners won't complain about that at all. You know, we just have it down that, part of that stretch on that street.
Do people park on the grass during a game along there? They do. Audrey?
Just a clarification, what side of the street would you do no parking on there?
Just in front of the ball field.
Yeah, but east side or west side?
It would be on the east side.
Because then you'd have people crossing the street to get to the ball field. That's what I was concerned about.
If it was on the west side?
If it was on, yeah. If if there's parking on the west side, then they have to cross. And the complaint is about the curve and speed. I wouldn't know that I would want that side.
Don't you have a lot of driveways on that side too, on the west?
Both sides, both sides. There's driveways both sides.
Okay.
After the, after the curve. Just curious.
So you're looking for a motion tonight?
I think ultimately, council direction, I mean, if if council feels that option three is the, if there's agreement that option number three is the way that that should move forward, we can take that direction. Otherwise, we can come back with more information if you need it. However, you'd like to see this progress.
Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to suggest that the council direction would be bring us a plan that provides about 50 parking spots for that area as you would best design it.
So?
With preference given to the location of option three and potentially look at if there's any way to get it north or further south. Okay.
And couldn't we use some of like the asphalt reclaimed and backfilling a little bit down there in the south too? That would eliminate hauling it out.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look at that.
I would think, I'm sorry.
Well.
Thank you. I would think like maybe involving someone from, you know, the baseball association and having some conversation there too. I am curious as to what they would find preferable, preferable because I think, again, if I have to walk a long way, I may not want it further south. But it's less likely I'm going to get hit by a ball than, you know, there's a pro and con to way. So whatever you bring us, we will not like. How's that, Jared?
That's perfect.
Okay.
All right, so we wait with a motion until you come back with a concept that we can all approve. Okay. All right, while you're still on 2023 Street and Other Improvement Projects Intent to Reimburse in Preliminary Budget. Jared?
Yeah, good evening again, Mayor and council. The two actions before you this evening are adoption of the resolution for the intent to reimburse. Ultimately, what that does is it provides the opportunity for the city to reimburse themselves for any costs incurred prior to bonds being sold for for any of the improvements. And then the second action is also a resolution for the preliminary projects budget. Ultimately, that's a budget that's been based on the feasibility report that was approved previously. It identifies the the project costs. Those preliminary budgets are always updated when bid numbers are received for the improvements. And just by a point of reference moving forward, as we outlined in a schedule that we presented previously, the anticipation is that we'll be back before you, likely that first meeting in March, requesting authorization for advertisement for bids. The projects are typically advertised for approximately three weeks. We receive bids. We evaluate them, and then we bring them back to council, at which point council can determine whether or not the the projects move forward at that point. So you'll, you'll, you'll hear about these projects and see them two more meetings at very minimum for this. So the estimated costs associated with each of the projects are identified in the car and as well as on the preliminary budgets. One thing I just did want to point out, that project number 2304, that is not a county overlay, and that is not the 19th Avenue path from 15th to 5th. It's actually the Sunrise path that we just discussed. If council recalls, that 19th Avenue path, we're pursuing different funding sources and grant funds to complete that improvement. So that's a typo. I apologize for that. But the preliminary budgets that are in your packet are accurate based on the projects. So with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
So we take each one of these resolutions? Each, we need to have a roll call vote on each one. Okay?
Yes.
Council? Questions? Audrey?
Just clarification, the process where we're at now. If we can't afford to do all of these, is this the time to talk about that, or?
Certainly, council can have that discussion at any point. The ultimately, these are the estimates that were provided with the feasibility report. Once the bids come in, then we'll know the exact prices. But certainly, if if there's some conversation that needs to be had, I would think that any time would be appropriate.
I'm just a concern that if we put them all out for bids and then we don't follow through on the bids or say we can't do them all, wouldn't it be better to have that discussion now than to put them all out?
Yeah, and again, the the next step in the process would be bringing the plans to council for authorization to bid. Certainly, at that point, or tonight, you could have that discussion. So, but if that is the, if that is the feeling, and I don't, I don't know what, in terms of what magnitude you might be thinking of, but that discussion could be had tonight or at that point too, so.
I just, the staff conversation that we had, I thought that was the intention that we weren't going to be able to do them all. So I was looking for staff direction on what we could do, so.
If you look at the alternatives to consider, that's the staff's recommendation, I suppose, is what you could say. It'd be a total of 13 million. Instead of 20 million, we'd be taking out the the project 2301B reconstruction.
What's your desire? Yes, Jared?
Can I ask whose ward that project is the, the Grace Avenue?
That's second.
Or two.
Yep.
Okay, so that would be?
Davis.
No.
Julie.
So Julie and Vicki. So my suggestion might be to wait until council member Osmus was here to have that conversation, just so that ward gets its full representation of council members at the table.
And as Jared had said, that, you know, you could pass these, pass this resolution tonight to have the engineering continue with what their projects are going to be, and then at the time that Jared brings us back for advertisement, then you can pull these out also. Because each project is on itself.
Okay, so, resolution of intent to reimburse for costs incurred on the 2023 Street and Other Improvement Projects. Do I have a, introduce the resolution, anybody?
I move to adopt the resolution.
I'll second. Okay, we got a motion to adopt the resolution. Discussion? Vicki?
So the $830,000 for project 2304 for Sunrise Ball Field Parking Lot and Path, would that, if we got the more expensive parking lot, would that fit in this budget?
That budget would be amended. So these are the preliminary as contemplated. We would bring back an amended budget for council approval if the, if the council decided to move forward with that larger parking lot option. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got a resolution in front of us. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Resolution approving preliminary budget for project 2301C.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Resolution approving preliminary budget for project 2303, 23rd Street Area Improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Resolution approving the preliminary budget for project number 2304 Sunrise Path and Parking Lot and Block 22 Parking Lot Improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Next one is the resolution approving the preliminary budget for project 2301A, Gorton Avenue Northwest Improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
The last one, the resolution approving the preliminary budget for project 2301B, 13th Street, Grace Avenue, Rice Avenue Improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Okay, that passes. Thank you, Jared. Next is broadband RFP selection committee recommendation. Justice?
All right. All right, yep. Given mayor members of the council, time to present the RFP selection recommendation on behalf of the RFP broadband RFP selection committee. So right now, I just want to take that time, right now, I just want to take this time to recognize and thank all the members of the committee. So that would be Councilman O'Brien, Councilman Butterfield, Dave Sisser, Larry Fuyon, Jonah Johnson, Dave Hillenbrand, Chief Operation Director Kyle Box, and myself. Thank you very much. I wouldn't have been able to do without you all. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. So this presentation, the point of this presentation is really to provide insight to the RFP selection process, how many proposals we received, what was our thought process in reviewing those proposals, what were some of the concerns that we had, how we alleviated, how we alleviated some of those concerns, and just really a lot of the fact finding process throughout the several months that we spent on this. Then also, finally, the recommendation for tonight. So I want to start this with, Wilmer's in a very interesting situation when it comes to broadband. Wilmer technically is not, technically is served, and so the Minnesota threshold for serve is 25 down and three up. Wilmer far exceeds that. Wilmer has a lot of infrastructure kind of throughout town from places that put it in years ago, that's been bought, sold, places go away, rename, restructure. And so we're left with the current broadband situation that we currently have. And so I think, I just want to provide like a backstory to how we got to this situation. So ever since I came on at the city of Wilmer, getting symmetrical high-speed internet was a priority for me. And so just kind of independently, I reached out to a lot of the ISPs in town to talk to them about what their capital improvement plans were for the future in Wilmer, how they saw their investment going in to eventually make Wilmer a gig city. Really wasn't that fruitful of conversations, just kind of found out that a lot of them didn't really have many intentions to do that. And so that ended up providing a LOI from Vibrant, and at the direction of the city attorney and city council, it was decided that we should go with an RFP process to protect the city's liability and to see if there were better offers out there. And so that was one of the things that we looked at. And so how, so how we got here today was we appointed that, appointed that broadband committee, and it was decided that we needed people from the cable commission to be on the committee to address the concerns and to really kind of source the proposals and all of the broadband issues that we had in the city. So then, purpose of the committee. So pretty simple, review the broadband proposals, meet with the potential partners and the applicants, and then also select a proposal to recommend to city council. And I think one of the things that's not listed here is a lot of the research in between the meet and select part. So it's just pretty straightforward about what the purpose of the committee was and kind of how we executed it. So then the proposals received. So we only received three proposals. I think we had about, talked to about half dozen people, different ISPs, different companies, and got a proposal from Vibrant, like I said, partial build out, focus more on the industrial park, really non-committal, very gray timeline, or like how much it would cost down the line for an entire build out. Windstream, partial build out at no cost to the city is what they were doing. I'll show you guys a map of that later. And then the complete build out would be a business subsidy would have to be granted that would wholly be funded by the city to Windstream. That would not include revenue sharing for them to build out the entire city. And then Hometown Fiber was proposing telecom mapping services along with an open access fiber network. And so we really had three separate proposals that we kind of had to suss out. And so I guess I really kind of early on, like after we met with everybody, we just, Vibrant definitely wasn't the direction that we wanted to go, just do the quality of the other proposals that we had. So we're kind of inputs to the decision. So first off, there's finances. So we, total cost of the project, cost of, to the, cost of the project to the city, then also funding, how would we pay for it? And then is revenue sharing a possibility? Technology more so covers the longevity of the infrastructure that we were putting in the ground, also the capability of the infrastructure that was going to be put in the ground. Was it going to be high-speed, gig-symmetrical? Was it going, and then also like what the range was, and also the costs, et cetera, I was like to the residents. And then legal, if this was legally defensible, since that was a catalyst in the very front end of the project of looking at, I guess, pursuing the RFP process, is, is this legal? Is this, is this going to leave the city liable to any lawsuits from other ISPs? And then also, just the personal research on staff's half, on staff's side, and then also on the committee's side. All right. So then the financials. So I'll start with Windstream, and I'll kind of break this down. So Windstream's proposal, they, like I said, they're currently building out a fiber network in town, and that was additionally at no cost to the city. And the additional request to the city that they filled out to potentially be partners of the city still didn't build out the entirety of the city. I'd say they went from about 50% to about 75 to 80%. And then to add all the neighborhoods north of the tracks, everywhere else was going to be at a total cost to the city of $4.7 million. So I can go to the, I got a pointer. So I guess everything kind of, I can't see it, everything east of Lakeland, essentially, everything south of Wilmer Avenue, everything north of the tracks was not going to be in the initial proposal. So to build out the rest of it, it was essentially just going to be like the very dense part of like old downtown Wilmer. It was the only thing that was going to be included at no cost to the city. So everything south of Wilmer Avenue, east of Lakeland Drive, everything north of the train tracks, and I'd say everything west of like 15th Avenue, southwest, was not going to be included in the initial proposal from Windstream, and the city would have to fund. And that's what the $4.7 million would cover. And so for the funding, we just kind of interpreted that this would be something that the city would have to pay for. So this would either have to come out of the industrial park fund, since the industrial park was going to be included in this. And then also, this would require raising taxes on citizens and would require geo bonds. And so then we talked to them about if there was a possibility for revenue sharing for the city to recoup any of that investment. The answer was no, very firm no. This was the cheapest they could do it without any revenue sharing possible. So then focusing on the Hometown Fiber proposal. So they're proposing the open access fiber network, and they were going to build out the entire city and include all the municipal facilities built out on one singular network. And then, so the total cost to the city would have been 19 point, total cost of the project would have been 19.3 million dollars. Cost to the city would be none, $0. It's not a typo. And so the difference in the projects is that Windstream uses geo bonds, which requires raising taxes on citizens. Funding for the Hometown Fiber proposal is, uses revenue bonds, which does not require raising taxes on citizens, and also does not affect the debt capacity of the city and does not have to compete with other projects such as street projects, infrastructure projects that the city may be, may be pursuing in facility projects as well. So that was a very big relief for the committee. That was something that I confirmed with Finance Director Okens, and we met with Baker and Tilly as well to confirm that and to talk about the process of revenue bond financing. And so then finally, the revenue sharing aspect of it, this proposal would deliver a quarter million dollar annual payment to the city in perpetuity, how the current contract is proposed. So that's something that we have a lot of flexibility on, on the backend, but as you can see, no cost to the citizens, no cost to the city, and also provides revenue sharing in perpetuity to the city if we so choose.
All right.
So then this is just really, so like I said, I ran this by the city attorney, broadband specific attorneys. I'll just read like the bottom part of this, just kind of let you guys know. So essentially, we just got like the stamp of approval that as is, the proposals that I had her review do not violate the statute and are generally legally acceptable. However, most legal issues with projects like this, like these arise during the final contracting process. For this reason, I highly recommend ensuring legal counsel is directly involved in the creation and finalization of the contract documents for whichever response is chosen by the committee. And so just the stamp of approval that on our end, that this, we are not going to leave the city liable whether, either direction that we choose to go. So then timing, so Windstream currently, like they're working on construction, putting a lot of the bigger things in the ground, and they're going to be delivering on their purpose fiber to the home this year for the cost that was at no cost to the city. But as far as building out the additional parts of the city that would cost the city $4.7 million, they were non-committal on a timeline. Initially, it could have been all done this year, had like we got all this figured out earlier. But right now, the most, recently I've talked to them, like about a week ago, they were non-committal on a timeline in construction, and construction could not start until the contract was executed. So for Hometown Fiber, their proposal was a three-year build out, and parts of the city would come online each year. And there's also an option for a two-year plan, where the entire city and its facilities could be built out in as soon as 2024 fall. And then willing to merge all their construction with the streets, with the streets plan, and then construction would start when the contract's executed. So just pretty standard stuff on that side. So technology. So one of the concerns that the committee had was the longevity of the investment. It wasn't lost on the committee. The magnitude of the decision, the recommendation that we were proposing, just with this amount of money, whether that was coming from taxes or whatever, just with the amount of money that we were going to put into this, we wanted to make sure that this was not something that we were going to have to revisit in three to five years. We wanted something that was going to last. And so through conversations, through research, the open access fiber network is something that is a 30 to 50-year solution for broadband issues in the city. And then we talked to private entities. I mean, they're using things from the 80s. I mean, they're not planning to replace things that they're putting in the ground now until way past 2050. And so then also, just kind of on a more technical side, there's the tiers of the internet. The open access fiber network would be a tier-two internet provider. Windstream would be a tier-three internet provider. As far as gig city is concerned, so Windstream was proposing delivering packages that would offer high-speed symmetrical internet, up to I think a gig, maybe two gigs, kind of like, like once everything was built out and they had it kind of up and running. The open access fiber network, bare minimum, is 500 symmetrical with a capability of going up to 10 gig symmetrical immediately. And so just to put that in perspective, that's, that's the best internet in the state, like not, not an exaggeration. Best internet in the state could be up and running in Wilmer totally in as soon as two years and partially coming online every single year. And then just with the open access fiber network. So one of the things that we learned, Chief Operation Director Box and myself at the convention amidst, was that rural connectivity is a very big barrier to investment for ISPs, and open access fiber networks are the way to mitigate that. And so essentially, it doesn't make sense for an ISP to invest money in infrastructure to get something to Sunberg if they don't have any stops along the way. What would make more sense for them if they didn't have to pay for those operating costs, even if they put it in initially and it's a grant funded or what have you, the operating costs are always going to win out and be more expensive for them in the long run. And so open access fiber networks directly mitigate, mitigate that concern by taking maintenance out of their hands. All right. So then just on to committee and personal research. So one of the biggest things of, and the, one of the biggest concerns for the committee was that this does not exist in the state of Minnesota, open access fiber networks. And so I was tasked with kind of finding any, if all of them, did they exist, where they existed, how they came about. And so hopped on the Google machine, ran into Lehigh City, Utah, and Bloomington, Indiana. And so Lehigh City, Utah, I'm thinking that I'm setting up a meeting with municipality, and they actually ended up putting me in touch with the company that built out their open access fiber network, and that was Strata. And so that was a very pivotal conversation for the committee. They really kind of gave us a lot of insight, a real good peek behind the curtain about how this runs, how this came about. And so essentially, in the state of Utah, like, open access fiber networks are standard operating procedure. That's just how they do internet there for their, for their communities. And this is a result of city administrators initially were, the ISPs had them going the singular ISP route and granting business subsidies, but they were locked out of revenue sharing. So as an industry, essentially, city administrators revolted and said, this has not worked for us. This is not equitable. We're not getting any money from it. You're taking all of this money from us, and we're not getting anything out, and we're still getting shoddy internet service. This doesn't work. We need to redo this. And so they ended up redoing this and producing this concept of open access fiber networks in the state of Utah. And that's, gave us all this history on it. But then, so one of the concerns was, well, does this work in small communities? We're only a town of like 20,000. Is that we have this, and we, like the recent town that they did, they did this in a town of 4,000 people, and it works, and they have nine ISPs on it. And so then another thing that he really wanted to show us was that this is an asset. This is a $20 million asset that the city has, that even if Hometown Fiber goes out of business, that we won't have to worry because other companies will come and buy this. This will always be an asset for the city and something that, like, it would be a sound investment on, on the city's behalf. And so then with my conversation with Bloomington, Indiana, they're also in the process of building out an open access fiber network. It was very interesting because the points of their project, it's been a seven-year process from them. They've had a lot of offers to just kind of give a grant subsidy to a singular ISP, and they have not, they've chosen not to do that. They deliberately did not want to do that. They wanted an open access fiber network. And so then also, they're kind of talking about some options that they have. network. And so then also they're kind of talking about some options that they have, grant, granting five-year exclusivity and then kind of, it's kind of the same struggles that we have. They didn't have a lot of confidence in the local ISPs. The local ISPs weren't really showing that we're, that they were gonna invest in the long-term future of the community. There's really gonna be a hindrance to the community more than an asset. And so they're going this route. And so from my conversations with them, uh, Bloomington, Indiana, and at Strava, and at Strata, uh, dawned on me, I mean, we have an amazing deal from the revenue sharing to the city doesn't have to put up any money. I mean, in Bloomington, Indiana, four times our size, um, they have to put up over a million dollars like as a part of their project. And so just from what I've, from what I learned and like what I think like the committee has gleaned, uh, this is an ideal situation as far as like rural broadband solution. And then as far as like why we're getting such a great deal from hometown fiber, they need proof of concept. Like I said, this does not exist in the state of Minnesota. And right now, we're just in a really good str- situation. A lot of coincidences really just kind of come together, work out for us, that we have such a great deal and that, um, it's an open access fiber network opportunity. And so then just finally the recommendations. So the recommendation and staff recommendation is for the hometown fiber open access fiber network. And so independent of, so I guess it's kind of twofold. Independent of, uh, hometown fiber, I would say that open access fiber networks are the solution, are the way to go as far as providing rural broadband internet for, like, with longevity and I think quality of internet being provided. And then secondly, the deal that we have from hometown fiber specifically, no one that I encountered had a deal as good as us, internet as good as we have, or any, internet as good as, is proposed, uh, the revenue sharing that we have proposed, and also just the options and the flexibility and the fluidity of the contract, um, that we have. I mean, so all of this is really just kind of worked out in our favor. Like I said, I mean, just from the multiple people that I've talked to across, uh, the industry. And so then reason for the recommendations. So when I say the status quo, right now, to work with an ISP, essentially, let's say you have a $5 million project, ISP is gonna ask the municipality to put up $4 million of it. The ISP have put up, internet service provider will put up $1 million, but then keep 100% of the revenue. That's just the cost of doing business. You're gonna grant them an 80% subsidy and you're not gonna see any revenue behind it. And so that was one of the things that we really wanted to address when it came to the RFP process was looking at, is there a way for us to get in on revenue sharing if, if at all possible? And then best decision for the future, just as far as like quality of life for residents, economic development for the city, uh, once again for residents who work remotely, telehealth, and then also just industry in general. But also putting the, putting to bed like the broadband conversation, this isn't something that we have to worry about in five years, seven years, or 15 years. This is, as long as we maintain it, like, we're good for decades. And then once again, prioritize this residence. This is not competing with, um, different ISPs or like ISPs taking advantage of residents. This is prioritizing residents and forcing ISPs to compete for residents and their subscription. And then, uh, and then this also does not require, uh, raising taxes. So just on our end, this is, this was the reason for our recommendation for hometown fiber, uh, and the open access fiber network. And questions for the recommendation for hometown fiber, open access fiber network?
Questions. Carl?
Uh, so, yeah, just a couple. It, uh, I'm in favor of this, but, uh, it, since it's not in Minnesota yet, is that gonna create any kind of logistical problems? What, uh, infrastructure kind of things? What, what would all that entail? They just come in and set up and, I mean, I don't know how all that works exactly.
Yeah. So, so essentially right now broadband is like the wild, wild west. Um, and so even in my conversation with Bloomington, Indiana, they're trying to get this signed before like they're, the big internet providers in the state of Indiana kind of put the kibosh to it. And so this is, they're, they're just, they're just the infrastructure company. It's essentially like putting in streets or like parking lots or anything. It's just infrastructure.
So then you mentioned as long as we maintain it, what, who does that? How does that, what entail? What?
Yeah. So, yeah, so that, that's, that's the beauty of this. So even though it'd be municipally owned, hometown fiber would be the people maintaining it. And so o- only thing that ISPs are relied on to do is to provide the service. And so that's how it removes the capital and the barrier to investment for them in these rural communities. So hometown fiber does the maintenance, the city owns it, and then the city gets a check.
And we're safe from them coming in and then all of a sudden jacking prices up or anything like that? That's not a concern?
Nope. So how this would work, uh, the bigger, the bigger ISPs wouldn't, oftentimes do not go on these networks. It would be the smaller ISPs and local ISPs that would be able to provide service on it. And so let's say that they wanted to, they were charging people exorbitant amounts. Anyone in this room could start like an ISP and then just undercut them because you have, you have the technology to do so. So it's, it's really just plugging in and providing the service. It's very, very simple.
Um, you mentioned the revenue sharing of, uh, 250K a year. So does that number adjust? Or that's just a flat rate? 10 years from now, inflation makes a, you know, a big difference to that number, but that's still the number?
Yeah. So there are, so that's what I was talking about, about like the flexibility of this. So that would be like the lease agreement payment, but like, like we learned in our Strata conversation, different cities have five-year opt-outs, seven-year opt-outs or 10-year opt-outs, if they want to plan for eventually removing the maintenance side of it from it and then absorbing that as a city and then capturing more revenue.
Okay.
And so that is an option that we maintain. And so they're, like, they can be greater than 250.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Audrey?
Um, appreciate your presentation, but I'm curious how it, how the, with what the county is doing right now. And this would just be city of Wilmer?
Yep. This would just be the city, city of Wilmer.
Okay. Cause I know, uh, when you were talking before, we were looking at going outside the city limits kind of thing. So I'm just curious, what is Candy High County working on right now? Cause I know that, I think I've heard, read right that they're applying for some more.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, so the, uh, outside of the county, the county is technically, they have a lot of pockets that are unserved. And so they qualify for a lot of border-to-border, border grants. And so what they're doing is filling in different pockets of the county, uh, that are unserved, but they're going the singular ISP option. And essentially the business subsidy that the county doesn't have to pay for, uh, exclusively because they got a grant. But those, that funding is not available to the city. That was why we had, this is something that we need to be proactive about.
Justice, explain why that money is not available to the city?
Yeah. So once again, the city of Wilmer is served. Uh, and so the served threshold is 25 down, um, and three up. Wilmer greatly exceeds that on multiple fronts. Also, uh, we were at our recent conference, uh, one of the things that we learned was that we're just above the threshold of 20,000 to qualify for more state and federal dollars for building out broadband networks. And so, I mean, just on twofold, I mean, like we, we, we are locked out of, uh, not free money, but state and federal money.
So the appropriate motion is to utilize the services of hometown fiber for?
No. So, yeah, yeah. So this would, so this is essentially like just kind of the start of the contracting process. So you would be authorizing staff to inform hometown fiber that they were selected for their RFPs. And then we'd start the process of them doing the financial vetting, submitting their stuff for Ba- to Baker Tilly, and then also like the legal contractor review and the negotiated show on that side. So this doesn't lock us into anything. This really just kind of starts the process of notifying them that we'd like to work with them and build a public-private partnership.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Justice.
Thank you.
Musco Lighting Purchase for Swanson Fields Complex. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, tonight, this is a project that was identified in the 2023 CIP, um, for lighting at, uh, Red Field, I believe is the, is the field that the lights would be going up on at the Swanson Field complex. This is due to the poor condition, concrete foundations, poles, and failing wiring. Uh, Musco Sports Lighting is a vendor on the state contract or is a state-approved vendor, and they have worked in the city, putting lights at different facilities and fields in the past as well. Um, a couple of key points I just wanted to touch on as well. There was, as I mentioned, there were dollars identified in the CIP this year, around $320,000, I believe. Um, but you'll notice the contract, the quote price was right at 264,000, uh, just under $265,000. And reason for the, the larger difference is, the estimate that was given by contractors and vendors at the time was they were just unsure of the price of copper, the price of conduit. So that's why we're seeing such a large difference on that, uh, from the quote, from the CIP number as well. Uh, another, another positive to this, if the council, if you elect to move forward with this, is that the contractor will actually be on site and have an opportunity to wire, uh, Yellow Field at the same time as well at the installation of Red Field, uh, for those lights. So this will eliminate the cost of a, a second mobilization from that contractor, saving $10,000 to $15,000 approximately. Um, and just an update on the rest of the complex, for everyone's, um, just for everyone's knowledge, Orange Field, that one's, we're good there. That one's newer and, um, can continue to move forward. Yellow would be like I had stated, uh, just needs to finish with wiring. Red Field would be new for 2023, and then Green and Blue Fields would be for future projects. Um, and then for the lifespan of these lights is approximately 20 to 25 years. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions? Tom?
What are we gonna be doing with the old lights from this? Are we gonna get rid of them or sit on them?
Sure. That's a great question. I had not had that conversation with, uh, Parks and Rec Director. Um, so if that's something, we can follow up on that. If there's any value to them, I'm sure there's a surplus option that we can go. Um, but I do not know the condition of the lights, if there's any value left in them, or if they can be surplus or sold.
Okay. Cause I thought we were talking about if we did move forward with a, a concrete slab for outdoor hockey rink, that we could use these lights out there to get us by until we got to pointing.
Well, yeah, we'll absolutely explore every option. If, if there's life in them to reuse, we absolutely will move forward with that. Yes.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I need someone to introduce the resolution.
I so move.
Here we go. Motion?
I'll second.
Second. Questions? Hearing done? Roll call?
Councilmember Ask?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Kyle. Fire Department is requesting permission to apply and accept if awarded for a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. Frank?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council before you tonight, um, we are requesting permission to apply for a FEMA grant, um, for replacement of portable radios. Um, our radios are over 16 years old. Um, they're not compliant to the standards that are required now. And Motorola no longer makes parts, batteries, or anything for them. So they're slowly being thrown away, basically. Um, the grant is gonna be for approximately $275,000. Um, there is a 10% match to that. Um, we are currently working with a grant writing company and had several meetings with this person and, um, are making progress. So, any questions?
Questions on, on this? Tom?
Was this in the budget for this year for new radios? I know we had a few things in there for you.
Um, it was not in the CIP. It was taken out of the CIP in trying to get this grant.
Okay.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for somebody to introduce the resolution.
I'll make that motion to adopt the resolution, requesting to apply and accept if awarded FEMA assistance to firefighters grant for replacement of mobile and portable radios.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second for the resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
All right, Frank, you're on again.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is the night for asking for grants, I guess. Um, I'm asking for permission to apply and accept if awarded a Minnesota State Fire Marshal Division grant for turnout gear, washer, and extractor. Um, the grant is up to $10,000 through the state fire marshal's office to purchase a new gear washer for us. Um, currently ours is, was manufactured in 2004. Um, it gets used just about on a daily basis. Um, we've had some maintenance issues with it lately and trouble getting parts. So, um, with this grant, it's a 25% match based on our population. I'll stand for any questions.
I hate to show my ignorance. What's a turnout gear?
Turnout gear is the gear that the firefighters wear.
Oh.
In, in fires and stuff.
Okay.
That's the technical term, I guess.
I was thinking turnout gear.
Oh, yes.
All right. Um, any questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for, uh, somebody to introduce the resolution.
I moved it after resolution to accept their apply and accept if awarded.
Okay. We got a motion to introduce the resolution. Give it a number and publish?
Second.
We got a second. Discussion? Hearing done? Roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Wilmer Housing Market Analysis Presentation. Aaron, I found this very interesting reading.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, I'm pleased to present, uh, the housing report. Um, uh, there are actually two reports, uh, that have been worked on for the last five months or so. Uh, there's the Wilmer report and then there's the, uh, Candy Ojai County report. Uh, we've been through four versions of the Wilmer one and I just today wrapped up, uh, reviewing the Candy Ojai County with Jay Thompson, who is the, uh, consultant we are working with, with Viewpoint Consulting. Uh, it, just as a quick reminder of the process, last summer, we, um, proceeded with moving ahead with the housing study. The last housing study that was done for the county was in the fall of 2015. So it was, uh, quite dated. A number of things have transpired during that time. Uh, very pleased that we had, uh, four different partners that contributed to the cost of, of these, uh, reports. Uh, the largest being the HRA, followed by the city of Wilmer, followed by a grant, uh, that was obtained by the West Central Realtors Association, uh, and then the EDC. We put money into it as well. And I'm just gonna start out a little bit of, by talking a little bit about trends, and then I'll get into some of the key findings as well. Uh, you know already that Wilmer is a regional center. It has about 18,500 jobs as of 2019. Overall, about 70% of the county's jobs are in this community in Wilmer. We have about half the population of the county, but 70% of the jobs, and I might add, in the last census, we had 94% of the population growth, uh, in this county occurring in Wilmer. Uh, just to kind of put in perspective, Wilmer experienced growth of 820 people in the 1990s, 1,259 people during the 2000s, 1,405 people during the 2010s. You know, the city of Wilmer is, is, I think, in some ways, unique. Uh, since it was founded in the 1870s, the city's population has grown every single census, uh, 14 consecutive censuses. Most cities in Wilmer, in, in Minnesota can't say that. Um, what do I think? What does the report say about the next decade? That is 2030. Wilmer is projected to grow by 2,685 people. And that partly stems from current development trends, the potential also to draw people that commute to Wilmer to, to work. Uh, on a typical daily basis, we have over 12,600 people that commute into Wilmer to work. And a quarter of those are commuting an hour, one way. So there, I think there's a potential to garner some of those people. Um, in terms of where people live in the county, for instance, as I mentioned, about half the population lives in Candy Ojai, a little over 21,000 out of the 43,000 and change. But, uh, the northern part of the, uh, county, particularly around the lakes, um, encompasses about 37% of the population of the county. And then the 11 smaller cities encompass about 15%. So the Seveas and the Blomkes and so forth. Um, and so, um, what are some of the things that we're seeing in terms of demographics as well? Um, on page one of the report, uh, Wilmer's population growth is- On page one of the report, Wilmer's population growth is projected among all major groups, age groups, this decade. And the senior population is projected to more, grow more quickly. Obviously, the population is aging. If you look on page thirteen of the report, and you'll see, for instance, the different, so it's on this page right here, where you see the bar chart, and you'll see the different categories under twenty, twenty to forty-four, forty-five to sixty-four, and greater than sixty-five. And you can see every single category is projected to go higher, okay? Sources of housing demand in Wilmer include projected household growth, pent-up rental demand, capturing a portion of the commuters to jobs in Wilmer, and senior housing needs. And I'll talk about that a little bit later here. And altogether, if you add all those together, we are projecting a need between now and 2030 of one thousand five hundred and eighty housing units, okay? And how is the mix of that? So if you look at the bottom of page one and the report, and you look at housing demand, and you look at that fifteen hundred and eighty units, how is that broken down? Well, ownership, that is, single-family homes and so forth, townhomes, four hundred and fifteen units, rental, five hundred and fifty units, we still continue to have a need on the rental side, but the number one category for housing needs in Wilmer, and by the way, I would also add, in the rest of the county, too, senior housing, six hundred and fifteen units. And that was split between fifty-five plus, those individuals that don't necessarily need services, and those with services. And you can kind of see that, three hundred and seventy-five with services, two hundred and forty in terms of fifty-five plus. If you want to break that down by year, if we need to have, say, for the next five years, nine hundred and sixty-five units, so rather than eight years, but five years, that means we need to have a hundred and ninety-three housing units a year. That's a bit daunting, but I think we can get there. We've had some successes. Now, let's look at the single-family homes for a second. So this is point number six on page two, and you look at that, Wilmer currently has how many lots available for single-family homes? A grand total of seventy with infrastructure. Now, if you include the area kind of west of Voss Park, there's about forty-one lots there that are platted, but they don't have roads, they don't have water and sewer. I'm talking about the lots like Oslo Meadows, you know, other ones that have the roads, water, and sewer. That's not a lot for a community of our size, seventy lots. It's recommended that new subdivisions come online within the next two to three years or so with at least fifty lots for single-family homes. In terms of some of those subdivisions, we have Trentwood Estates, for example, Woodbury additions that allow townhomes. However, there are very few lots available to accommodate townhomes in Wilmer, and no recent subdivisions that are designed for townhomes. So we just talked about the need for senior housing. Well, one of those areas of need is townhomes. Maybe somebody is downsizing from maybe a two-story down to maybe they want to be one level, for instance, with one or more likely two garages. Well, what are you going to do? It's recommended that lots be made available to accommodate one-level townhomes with attached two-car garages to appeal to the primary target market, that is, empty nesters. And then it gives a price range. In the case of the townhomes, they're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand. In the case of the entry-level homes, they're looking at two seventy-five to three twenty-five. New rental developments. Obviously, you are quite aware of some of the different projects that the EDC and others have been working on, and these include Block Twenty-Five, which is now up to the roof level downtown in the Renaissance Zone. There'll be fifty-eight units that are currently under construction. Edge View, and you may know this as Unique Opportunities. That's the name they're calling that development, is Edge View, and that's a hundred and forty-four units that are currently under construction, and that they'll be done in the first and second quarter of the year, hopefully. Preserve on Twenty-Fourth, that has three buildings, a hundred and eight units, and one of those buildings is already open, and it was full within like two weeks. It's recommended that an affordable rental property of forty-five to fifty units be added to Wilmer over the next five years. And if you notice, there's, you know, one of the things that we've really tried to key in on has been market rate units. We need those for folks that are, so that they're not income-restricted units. And so really, it's only a small portion that we're looking at for affordable rental property, at least based on the report. Now, let's switch down to points eleven and twelve in the report, and the key findings, and these pertain to senior housing. It is recommended that a market rate senior fifty-five-plus rental development be added in Wilmer with eighty to one hundred units within the next five years. And I can tell you that I've already had several conversations with developers that are, been pining away for this report. I just met with a group last Thursday. So I think this report will inform us as to where we put our time, our resources, our energies over the next year and two. These units could be in a single multi-story building. They could also be broken down in terms of townhome-style units with attached garages. Rents would begin at twelve hundred for one-bedroom and fourteen hundred for two-bedroom units. And then it's also recommended development of a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and ninety-five of independent assisted living and memory care within the next five years. And so you can kind of see there the, not the services, and then the ones, the senior housing with services. Let's turn over a little bit to the next thing, and then in terms of other areas. I'm going to mention, in terms of senior population, I think you'll find this interesting. So this is on page fourteen. So once, so this is table three, and there's like thirty-seven tables, so I'm not going to bore you with all the tables, but I kind of get into this data, so I'm sorry. But table three, table three is projected population growth by age. This is very interesting, at least I find it interesting. And so let's look at Wilmer for just a second. When you're talking about senior housing, what are the key age groups that you're thinking about for senior housing? It's typically seventy-five to eighty-four, okay? So you may be approaching retirement, but your housing needs are going to be different than the group that's seventy-five plus, okay? Now, let's look at the census. You can see by the columns, there's 2010, 2020, 2030. So what is his forecast for Wilmer's population between now and 2030? In total, we will be going up from twenty-one thousand fifteen to twenty-three thousand seven hundred. Now, let's look at the age seventy-five to eighty-four. That goes from one thousand to one thousand four hundred and ninety. So that is a forty-nine percent increase in population for just that age group, forty-nine percent. Let's skip down to the remainder of the county. Again, seventy-five to eighty-four. It goes from fourteen hundred and nine to two thousand two hundred and forty-five. That is a fifty-nine percent increase in that population. And then when you blend everything together, we see an increase of thirteen hundred and twenty-six seniors in that age group of seventy-five to eighty-four, or a fifty-five percent increase, fifty-five percent increase in senior population needing housing, and they may not find it here. So how do we address that? That's part of our challenge. So if we're, if we're looking at an increase in the, of twenty-six hundred, half of that, half of that population increase between now and 2030 are seniors seventy-five to eighty-four, half. So we better be thinking about housing for seniors. So my, my thought pattern is, yes, we're not going to forget about townhomes, we're not going to forget about multifamily, we're not going to forget about single-family, but I think, at least in terms of the EDC, this is going to be a topic at our strategic planning session on March sixteenth. That's a plug for everybody. And thinking about, is this a priority? And if so, should we put our time and efforts into it? So I may, for example, send Sarah off to a senior housing conference in Chicago. There may be different things that we need to do. I could talk a lot more on the housing, but I think I'm just going to pause there. Any questions that you have in terms of, of the housing report?
Aaron, you mentioned that this would be driving kind of, and setting priorities for you at EDC and probably for us as well. Could you give us like some examples of how you think that might play out?
Sure. So when we're talking about senior housing, not everything is larger facilities. We may be looking at pods, we may be looking at concrete housing, we may be looking at a variety of things. And if you're talking about projects, say, you look at Bethesda North Point, for example, which includes, that was the project, a seventeen million dollar project that was built in New London, opening in the fall of 2021. It includes seventy units, independent living, assisted living, and memory care. So it has the whole gamut. And so if you're going to do that, you're going to need a certain amount of land. You could be looking at that ten, twelve acres, perhaps fifteen acres of land. So part of what we do is we may guide the developers and say, hey, take a look at this area, or take a look at this area of the city, for instance, that we think would make sense for that type of development. If you look at the 2020 census, what was the, what were, what was the areas or the neighborhoods of this city that grew the fastest this last census? If you recollect, because remember, there were some changes in, in the wards and so forth, the fastest-growing area was the southeast quadrant, the southeast quadrant. But that's probably not going to be the case for the 2030 census. So the fastest was growing was the southeast quadrant of the city. My prediction is that for the 2030 census, the fastest-growing area is going to be the north half of the city. You have Unique Opportunities, Edge View, you've got other projects that are coming online. So do we have the right infrastructure? Are we looking at the right areas?
Can you also provide a little bit of rationale for why there's a thirteen point five percent decrease projected in the Wilmer population for ages fifty-five through sixty-four? And I noticed that it's decreasing by twenty-four percent for the rest of the county. Where are those people going? Can you?
Right. Well, it's the boomers. And once again, I think it was the boomers' fault. But you do have, you do have the ebbs and flows of the different populations, the millennials and so forth, and so there's that ebb and flow. I would say that, you know, sometimes units of government get it wrong, and so, for instance, the census and the state demographer said before the 2020 census, oh, Wilmer, you have a population of twenty thousand. And I said, no, it's more than that. We ended up at over twenty-one thousand. So sometimes they don't quite get it right, and I think, I, I'm being more optimistic that we're going to see more development happen here.
How are we going to help the contractors find them quality help to help build all this?
Right.
If it comes down to it.
Right. It's not just the contractors that need employees, it's the whole gamut of things. And we've been trying to do different things. One of the things that we tried to do just a week or two ago was have a virtual job fair. And so in, in part, what you're trying to do is, is get people outside of Candy Ojai to take a look at it. The farthest, the person that was probably the farthest away was from Tennessee, that was looking at maybe perhaps relocating here, maybe a family connection, I don't know. We had somebody from Arizona that looked at it. I think we have to be creative on that and look at, how can we get people to take a look at us, not just recirculate the same people in Candy Ojai?
Any other questions?
Clear as mud? Okay, sorry. But I do think this is kind of, I think, a good report for us. I'm looking forward to sharing it with various parties, not only the developers. I'll be talking about it with the Housing Task Force. I already had some discussions with the county presenting as well to them, and certainly would welcome your receiving it, so.
Audrey?
Are you going to come back and present the Candy Ojai County one also to us?
I certainly can, absolutely. Because that has some interesting information, too.
Aaron gets a chance to talk, he'll come. Okay, anything else? Well, thank you, Aaron.
Sure.
Well done. Again, I really enjoyed reading it. All right, next is our police chief, Jim. Set a public hearing for potentially dangerous dog.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The item before you for consideration tonight is to set a public hearing for February twenty-first for, regarding a potentially dangerous dog. As you may be aware, under city ordinance, the Wilmer Police Department is set as the Animal Control Authority, where they review when dog bites come in. After reviewing reports and things like that, the Animal Control Authority can set a dog as a potentially dangerous dog, in which there's certain limitations or certain conditions that have to be met by the owner. They can also set the dog as a dangerous dog, for the status of a dangerous dog, which require greater limitations on the dog, including insurance and some things like that. In this particular case, there was an individual in town that was bit by a dog in late 2022. The owner of the dog, after reviewing the reports to the Animal Control Authority, listed the dog as a potentially dangerous dog. Under the ordinance, the dog owner has the right to appeal that. It used to be to the Public Safety Committee, since we no longer have that committee, now it would come to the full council. So the request is to set the public hearing for February twenty-first, where we would give further information on the designation of that dog, and then the, the dog owner would have a chance to, to explain their version to the council also.
So it's just a simple motion?
I believe so, yes.
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing on February twenty-first for the potentially dangerous dog.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wesley, you talk to me about a work session on February twenty-seventh?
Good evening, council. On the agenda tonight, yes, we'd like to have a discussion of a work session on Tuesday, or Monday, excuse me, February twenty-seventh. We have not set, we have, we have availability at the event center for that, at the community room, so that's where we would propose that we would have the session at. And the discussion would be on the City Hall Community Center again, and our architects, Bruce Schwartzman from BBK, would be out to show more presentation on updates that, the City Hall presentation, and further discussions on that, so. And then we would have whatever else, we have a lengthy list of things that we could add to that if we need to.
Okay. Counsel? Okay, twenty-seventh, Justin?
It wouldn't work for me. I'd have a conflict that evening.
I believe I would, too.
My conflict could be resolved if it was Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. I could make Thursday, the second, as well.
Maybe just a request, since we're short three other board members tonight, that you just send out a Maybe just a request, since we're short three other board members tonight, that you just send out a, uh, see when people can be there that week?
We can do that.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay.
We had asked to review the assessment policy and just thinking about that coming down the train with that.
I understand, that's one of the things that would be, that's on the list to do, but I don't know time-wise if that would be enough time and to devote to that. One, one might take quite a bit of time, and the assessments, I'm guessing, is gonna take quite a bit of discussion also.
Just a concern that we get that done before we get ourselves down the road again.
Thank you. Anything else? All right.
Okay, we will send out a poll, thank you.
Community pride announcements. If none, um, we'll go into closed session. Closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D 05 subdivision 3C to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the city's purchase or sale of real property and/or to determine the asking price for real property to be sold by the city.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would ask if, uh, Jared Volkey could remain?
What's that?
I would ask if Jared Volkey, uh, with Bolton and Mink could remain in the closed session.
Okay. 13D 05 subdivision 3C. The council will not be asked to take any formal action after concluding the discussions in the closed session. The following real property will be discussed separately in closed session, parcel 95-917-5511 Industrial Park. Motion to close the meeting.
Sub moving.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. All right, we're in closed session. Now I read the, uh, statement for the record.